Public notice. The purpose of this public hearing is for citizens' comments on Bill 2014-04, Ordinance Number 826.
It's an ordinance to change the zoning of certain property in the city of Fairview, Tennessee located on Old Nashville Road owned by Timothy R. Mangram and wife Jessica Mangram. As shown on the Fairview Geological Listing of Assessment Row, map 42 parcel 06512, acres from RM 12 to RS 10. I would say that's a typo there, Larry. I don't know who, Brandy, whichever one of y'all prepared that. The acreage is incorrect. And B would be Bill 2014-05, Ordinance Number 827, an ordinance changing the zoning of certain property in the city of Fairview, Tennessee located on Horn Tavern Road owned by Walter C. Totty and wife Beverly D. Totty. As shown on the Fairview Geological Listing of Assessment Row, map 22 parcel 133, 8.37 acres from R 40 to R 20.
Is there anyone here to speak on either of the properties? Motion for adjournment?
Just close the public.
This says adjournment. A motion. Do I have a motion for adjournment?
Just close the public.
Closed the public. Thank you, sir. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the City of Fairview Board of Commissioners meeting, March 20th, 2014, at 7:04 PM. Those who would, please join us. We have with us Girl Scouts, and we are going to be honored by her leading us in the pledge. Those who would, let's pray. Mr. Hall?
Pray with me, please. Most gracious, heaven and father, and indeed thank you for this evening. We thank you for many blessings of life. We thank you for Jesus. And we thank you for this board tonight where they make the best decisions possible for our community. These things I ask in Jesus's name. Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Give her a hand. Thank you. We encourage our young leaders to join us, whether they're watching on television or if they watch the rebroadcast. Sometimes they're lengthy and boring, but you will learn, and we appreciate all your participation. So, we always welcome our youth of Fairview. Next items is citizen approval of the agenda. What are the wishes of the board?
Mayor, I'd like to have one withdrawn at this time. Item J.
Item J.
I'll defer it to later on.
That'll be new business, 8J. Deferred?
Yes, ma'am.
Requested the city manager. I'd like to add on old business, 7F. A discuss and/or action of approval of the reburn of the test site, of the 3.2 acres and the dome. And the purpose of this is we have gotten permission and an approval in writing from the land trust to move forward on that portion. Also added, 7G, is to discuss and/or action on a new quote presented on the trees on the test site of the 3.2 acres. Will there be any other additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?
Move to approve.
Second.
Motion in second. Any other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Next item is citizens' comments. This evening, we have Terry Cordell. Would you join us at the podium? You have three minutes to share your questions or concerns. Welcome.
Thank you very much. Very good. Mr. Sutton, I meant to tell you I was talking before the meeting about the inability for us to vote early here in Fairview, and I made the phone call, didn't really get anywhere. She did tell me, I meant to tell you, she did tell me I can get a written ballot if I was 60-year-old, or I really think that's some good.
If I can say this right now while you're doing it, I've got copies of those, and I'm asking the city manager to put those online and have them available here. If you're 60, there's several reasons, but if you're 60 or disabled, you can get one of those, and we're gonna make them available here at City Hall for everybody.
The other two things I'd like to mention to you, for you to consider, I live at 7838 Pinecrest Court, which is out on Ococks Park, about two and a half miles. The one thing is, the yellow lines on that road are almost invisible. There's certain areas before you get to, I'm trying to think, that new subdivision on the right, it's the P.
Poston Place.
Poston Place. Before you get to Poston Place, just before you get to that, you've got lines, sort of. Once you get there and all out, there's hardly any lines at all. And I couldn't tell you the number of times my wife and I, driving down that road at night, had to almost take the ditch because someone would be in the center of the road because I couldn't see the lines. It's very, very dangerous. And when it rains, it's even worse. You can't see hardly even the lines that are there. So, if you consider doing something about that, I would appreciate it. The other thing also has to do with subdivision out that direction where I live. We do not and cannot hear the tornado sirens. It's impossible to hear them when they go off. We've never heard one yet. And I don't know if the people at the top, we live at the bottom of Pinecrest Court, if you're familiar with that road at all. We live at the bottom, about the third house on the end, from the end of Cuddlesack. Maybe the people at the top can hear it, but no one at the bottom can hear those tornado sirens when they go off. So, if that could be considered a possibility of putting another one up where we could at least hear those tornado sirens when they go off. And that's all I have. Thank you for listening.
Next item is the business spotlight. We have highlighted this evening Bailey Booze on Fairview Boulevard. Ms. Bethany Jones, welcome.
Thank you for having me out tonight. Is it okay if I stand to the side so I can talk to everyone? I've lived in this community for about 22 years and wanted to open a gift store about that long. I recently, in November, opened Bailey Booze Ice Cream and Gift Shop on, I guess what's considered the east end of Fairview Boulevard. We serve ice cream and have a gift for all, excuse me, for all occasions. I do custom monogramming. If you have sports teams, businesses, I can take care of those as well. And I just appreciate everyone coming out. Everyone has been so nice, and I look forward to serving Fairview and your gift and ice cream needs.
Great. Thank you.
I know you can't tell it by looking at me, but your ice cream's really good.
Hi. Will you share your hours for us?
I'm open from 10 to 6 Tuesday through Saturday. We will expand those hours for the summer season, hopefully, probably Memorial Day to Labor Day. I do all my advertising at this point on Facebook, so if you're on Facebook, please go on and like us. That's where I post all my sales. I also ask questions of the community, like, what would you like to see my extended hours be? So, I enjoy input and listen to that and base my changes on what the community tells me.
Great. Okay. Thanks. Thank you. Well, welcome to Fairview, and congratulations, and best of luck.
Thank you.
Next item, number five, is the awards and recognitions. Do we have any awards or recognitions this evening by staff? Any by the board?
Just, I'll go ahead and get it all the way now. This Saturday, there's gonna be a mud bog and a mud drag at the Lions Club on 96th. Registration starts at 2:00. All the excitement starts at 4:00, so please be there and help support the Lions Club. They do great work.
Okay. Next item is public announcements. I will announce that the Fairview Area Chamber of Commerce is having their Business Expo on the 29th. So, if anyone is in business, Ms. Bailey, or anyone else that is interested in being a part of the Business Expo, it's from 10 to 2, and they would love to hear from you, 799-9290. And if you have a business or just want to participate and be a part of the Business Expo, they would love to see you. Any other public announcements this evening?
Thank you, Mayor. The typical emission testing is Monday and Tuesday of each week from 7:30 till noon. Thank you, Mayor.
Okay. Thank you. Item number seven, old business, A. Second and final reading on Bill 2014-04.
It's an ordinance to change the zoning of certain property in the city of Fairview, Tennessee located on Old Nashville Road owned by Timothy R. Mangram and wife Jessica Mangram. As shown on the Fairview Geological Listing of Assessment Row, map 42 parcel 06512, 1.03 acres from RM 12 to RS 10. Move for approval.
Second.
Are they required to be here?
Them are the representative.
Anyone representing this property?
We'd have to defer it for one meeting if there's no one there.
Item B, second and final reading on Bill 2014-05.
It's an ordinance to change a certain zoning of property in the city of Fairview, Tennessee located on Horn Tavern Road owned by Walter C. Totty and wife Beverly D. Totty. As shown on the Fairview Geological Listing of Assessment Row, map 22 parcel 133, 8.37 acres from R 40 to R 20. Move for approval, and they are duly represented.
Second.
For the record, I'd like to show that I have personal property, and will be recruiting myself from the vote. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. C, discuss and/or take action on vacant board seats. Ms. Johnson, we talked about a few things. Refresh my memory there. We have an application on the BOZ, but there was a requirement that was not met. Okay? We had an application for the industrial board yet? All right. And the Finance Review Committee, we have one volunteer position. Mr. McCoy has informed me that he is withdrawing his application at this time. So, my question would be, do we want to address the Board of Zoning if it was deferred and it does not meet qualifications? I don't think that we can act at any point on that because it's not been addressed. Correct?
That's correct.
That is correct, although, and I don't think we can, could do it anyway because the gentleman's not here, but when you asked the question the last time, Mitch Daddy was sitting in the very back pew and raised his hand and said he was willing, and he didn't think he had to put in another application. He thought that his, that, he was informed that his one application was, was good when he volunteered for that. But he could not be here tonight to be for that vote because they're on spring break.
Okay. Can you, Ms. Johnson, confirm that he has a proper application for the next meeting for the Board of Zoning? And could we continue advertising for the industrial board on the website? And I guess we will address here, we have discuss and/or take action on Finance Review Committee. The applicant that we have is Ms. Brooks. Are you present?
Yes.
Okay. Would there be any other comments or nominations, or would we want to move forward with the acceptance of Ms. Brooks?
Was there any criteria?
Background per application states. Background in finance.
Yeah. I would say, I mean, the first, so many people were just recommendations, so I think if she's interested and has, I mean, I think the key was some kind of background in finance.
Provided her resume.
I'm now the county commissioner. I think she meets qualifications for that.
And a motion?
Make motion to approve.
Motion in second. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you, Ms. Brooks, for your application and your interest. Mr. Bissell would probably speak with you after the fact of the meeting, say if there's any scheduled appointments. And then, of course, Mr. Doherty is working on things, and if you have inquiries, getting with the two of those gentlemen before the evening may be helpful to exchange emails or whatever's needed. But thank you for your volunteerism. Okay. Y'all in favor? Let's move on. D, second and final reading of Bill 2014-02.
It's an ordinance for the amendment to the City of Fairview, Tennessee budget for fiscal year 2013-2014 budget. Move for approval.
Second.
We have a duly first and second discussion?
I emailed everybody.
Yeah. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Item E, discuss and/or take action on scheduling Middle Tennessee Electric Land Trust of Tennessee and the Board of Commission. Dates, city manager?
We have one date, the 27th of this month. The representative for Middle Tennessee Electric is out on spring break, so we couldn't confirm. We originally had 13th and 18th of this month, which fell with our spring break. So, if y'all can make the 27th, I can schedule that because he has approved that date.
And what time are you doing that?
A week from today. What time?
Right now, we don't have the time sets, and so y'all tell me what time's convenient for y'all.
Okay. Sorry. 27th?
Yes, ma'am.
I'm available all day.
I'm available from 10 to 2.
10 to 2? So, we have Thursday to 27th.
No, that's always the problem.
Are you available 2 to 4?
I can be at.
Should be maybe an hour?
I would think so, yes.
Hour to 30 minutes, if tops?
And that might be more convenient for them because the land trust will have a representative here at the same time, and they have agreed.
Do you have a preference of time in mid of day?
10:00 in the morning's best for me.
But I thought this was for them to be able, they wanted to speak with the public, too. Was this not the same?
I thought we were doing it in the evening.
Yeah. I think it has to be in the evening because they wanted to answer any questions for citizens. So, I think we're gonna have to do it.
I'd find another date when he gets back in town.
Okay.
The electric company wanted to, yeah.
The evening of the 27th, 6:00 or something is not optional?
It's fine with me.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. That's fine, too. I can be here after 6:00.
Move it out.
6:00 on the 27th.
Let's shoot for that. If we can make it, we'll all plug in. 27th at 6:00 PM, Middle Tennessee Electric. And that would be a publicized workshop for the public aired and taped for their viewing.
Yes, ma'am.
Excellent. All right. At 6:00 PM. Don't necessarily have to vote on that, do we? To discuss. All right.
We're setting a workshop.
All right. I need a motion.
Motion to set a workshop with MT. March 27th, 6:00 PM.
Second.
Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. New business, A. Discuss and/or take action on taping and airing of city workshops. Commissioner Carroll?
We forgot F and G.
The ones you had.
My added, F. Discuss and/or take action. City manager, you have approval of the test site of 3.2 acres and the dome of the reburning.
Yes, ma'am.
And you provided to me the letter.
Each one of you should have one copy.
Which reads, "Please consider that this is a notice that the city can proceed with this very limited burn at this time. Any additional burns or timber harvests will need to be subject to a fully fleshed-out and approved forest management and burn plan with a focus on forest and habitat protection and watershed conservation. As I discussed with city manager Hall, I am glad to review the list of potential foresters and provide a recommendation if possible." This is from Emily Parrish with the Land Trust of Tennessee.
Move for approval.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. G. Discuss and/or take action of new quote from Mangram Logging and Forestry. And the purpose of the new quote is the trees in the zero basal were not marked, and upon site review, the logger, the city manager, the arborist, several of the employees, and the park director visited and the...
Yes, ma'am.
Who dumbass?
Your fine.
Okay. And Mr. Powell. They discussed that they were not a true tree count on the bid that was given, which was originally approved at $14,775. There were additional trees from $250. It would be a total of 308. He did reduce his price per tree, and the total cost of the new bid is $17,0710. The city manager is requesting approval to move forward.
Move to first.
Second.
First and second discussion?
Can you kind of just give us a rundown for the public? What all they found and why the price difference?
After the original count, it was projected to be around...
250.
250. And actually, that area turned out to be 252. That's how close they were in marketing. And then, the additional is the zero basal in the dome area, and that's the additional 58 trees that...
Went up to 308.
Right. Yep. So, he lowered his price, you know, per tree because of the additional volume and per tree, you know, I think $2 a tree less, so with the additional trees, carried it up to $17,000. I got to that figure.
Other discussion?
And that will be paid for out of the Blue Park Fund.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Do you need this back, or is this my copy?
No.
Okay. Thank you. All right. Now, we're moving on. 8A. Discuss and/or take action on taping and airing of city workshops. Commissioner Carroll?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor. One of the things that I brought up in the last meeting, and there were some issues with the workshop where we televised for the first time a workshop. It's since I've been in, I can't say for history, but we've only been doing the actual YouTube clips for the last year, two years, maybe. So, but one of the things I want to discuss is, it came up to be a question whether that was any legal liability putting that particular workshop due to the nature of the matter where we were discussing, you know, somebody's qualifications and posting that on YouTube. So, it became a question. I did seek a legal opinion, and there was nothing really the attorney advised that would potentially put us in a liability, but whether or not it was professional practice, you kind of tended to agree with us, and it's not the most professional practice to put a workshop where we're debating qualifications and things that we liked or didn't like about a candidate that's potentially looking to go to other cities and be a city manager. Once it goes on YouTube, it can follow them. So, it brings up the whole discussion of whether or not, A, do we tape workshops, or do we just televise them? And so, I just wanted to kind of bring it up for an open discussion for we can set a standard, because all of a sudden, now we're taping and televising all workshops. So, I'm all for transparency, and that's not the question, but I wanted to discuss with the Board of Commissioners, the workshops were pretty much designed for us to be able to discuss openly what we feel and it not be scrutinized and taped. Now, with that being said, they have to follow the sunshine requirements. It's an advertised meeting. Anybody can always come to the workshops. So, where do we stand is pretty much what I would like to discuss tonight.
Comments from the board?
I think we continue having the workshops as needed, but I think it is not necessary to record them or air them. They're all publicized. Everyone that wants to attend can attend. It hasn't been done in the past. If the board sees fit that we need to do it, then that's fine, but I'm under the impression that it will probably change how discussions are done, and it did the other night. I can tell from my own perspective that I was very reserved in things I did not allude to during the workshop.
And there's no legal responsibility as far as the sunshine goes, as far as being taped and recorded. Am I right?
No, sir. The word sunshine law and the open records is used synonymously. Actually, the legislation that passed it is called the Open Records Law, Open Meetings Law, commonly known as the sunshine law. It says that, the statute says that the public's business shall be done in the public. And it relates to, there's some statute requirements and some of our own charter requirements about the meetings being properly advertised, what's required to properly advertise it, that the meeting be open to the public, that the records be open to inspection and copying if desired. That's what, the only thing that the Open Records Act deals with is the meetings themselves being properly advertised and being conducted in the public. There's nothing in the Open Records Act that says you have to televise the meetings. That's your call. If you want to televise them, you can. If you don't want to televise them, you don't have to. I would be consistent. I'd either, I'd either televise and tape the workshops, or I wouldn't televise them. And if I televise them, I mean, just my thought would be, if I televise them, I'd tape them because some people might miss them. But that's strictly your call. If you don't want to televise your meeting here tonight, you don't have to. Do you have to have the meeting open to the public? Absolutely. Any citizen in Tennessee can come in and review and/or copy those records if they want. And I've said this before, when you have a meeting, it's always nice to see the public here. But the Open Records Act says that the meetings must be open to the public. Doesn't say the public's got to come. If you're out here and you've properly advertised the meeting, and you've got the most important business that this city's ever had to be conducted, and no citizen is here, you do not have to dismiss your meeting. It's properly advertised. The public has the opportunity to attend. You can, you can't make them attend. I notice the attendance has been excellent or been good over the last several years, and that's good. But your, your meeting must be open to the public. The records must be open for public examination and/or copying if they so desire, but there is no requirement in the law for you to televise and/or tape a meeting or workshop.
Comments?
Motions?
Well, I mean, I just kind of wanted to see where y'all stood first on it, because I think there's one or two things. I like the idea of being transparent. I know not everybody can make it to a workshop, but taping is one thing and putting it on YouTube versus televising. So, I think it's two distinct, different things. We can all decide tonight, yes, we want to make it easier for our citizens, and we'll televise our workshop, and that, that's fine. We could do that, or we're going to televise and tape. Or the other option is you keep doing it the way we've always done it, and just advertise the workshops, invite the public in, and discuss. So, I guess a question that I have for all of y'all would be, do you feel like, and I think Vice Mayor Johnson alluded to, did it hinder our discussion? And I do want to point out that one of our workshops tonight, a employee made the comment, oh, are we being taped? So, did we hinder him from feeling like he could speak freely? Or... Or, you know, that's one thing that we need to take in consideration. I felt like at the workshop with the city manager, I did not get to say everything I would have just out of respect of it being televised. And it is a guy, we were looking for a candidate that was potentially going to be our city manager. And we should have been able to openly discuss. But unfortunately, when you know, and it's just reality of life, when you know something's being taped, then you are going to be very cautious of what you say.
Well, it didn't affect me how I did or how I didn't speak. But my statement would be providing the public record should be viewed as a routine responsibility of an open government. The principle would be that providing access to public records in audio, video, or what we have available is an essential part of a representative where citizens have a right to know what their government is doing. And after almost a hundred thousand dollars spent on audio and visual equipment, the painting, the lights, and all the things that was done, I believe it's something that we've already invested in. And to not do it would then be a question of why'd you spend the money for the better cameras or the better audio? And why would you not feel comfortable speaking about public business?
I can answer some of that.
If the public were listening, excuse me.
I can answer some of that question.
Excuse me.
Mayor, point of order.
I'm making a statement. She asked me.
Yes, ma'am.
You may have the floor.
We need to have a motion before we have all this.
She asked for comments, so I was giving mine.
I understand, but she, we're really, point of order. We need a motion before we do all of this.
Other comments to Patty's question?
Well, I would like to hear the mayor's comments. But if I need to make a motion, then I will to continue the discussion. And I make a motion that we do televise the workshops, but we do not post them or record them.
Second.
Now we'll discuss.
Any discussion?
To me, I think that's defeated the purpose. But, because anybody can record it at home and then put it on YouTube. So there's no, that's not going to solve anything.
And you're probably right on that. I just want to be able to openly discuss whether or not. I don't really think it has anything to do with the equipment that we just purchased because we are using this equipment to better the situation and we have. And now we are able to put them on YouTube and upload the videos. It has made our government more transparent. The question is whether or not a workshop is being affected, the purpose of a workshop is being altered to say it's all about being transparent. Whether or not the motion, you're probably right if we're videoing and anybody, we're allowing anybody else to put it up on YouTube. But I guess it depends on what the board feels like is our duty. And, or not, or do we have a duty? I mean, we did what the law requires and we always have done what the law has required.
Other discussion?
My opinion is that by definition, the workshop is an informal discussion since no vote can be taken. It's supposed to be an informal discussion conducted in a manner that allows us to speak freely in a less formal way. There are no requirements to follow Robert's Rules of Order. There are no, there's no particular structure given to a workshop. And I think those things are all not promoted when you videotape it, broadcast it, that sort of thing. I think it's just human nature that when it's being broadcast on television and recorded and loaded to YouTube or U-verse or whatever else we're sending out, that we all become a little more reserved in our speech patterns and expressing our open opinions. And I think that diminishes the value of the workshop. So I think that every time we have a special meeting, every time we have a regular meeting, we should fully use our capabilities to broadcast and make that available. But when we have a workshop, I think it ought to be, if you're that interested for that particular subject matter, because our workshops have to have a particular subject matter, we don't just get together just to chat. But if you're that interested, then I think you have to, you should be attending.
Is that a
I agree.
Amendment to the motion?
No, I'm, I'm just going to vote no to the motion.
Well, and I will
Unless y'all withdraw it.
Yeah, I'll withdraw all my motion. And then restate a motion basically saying that
You can withdraw your second?
Yes, I do.
Yes, okay. Go ahead.
We will keep proceeding the way we are with workshops, advertising, doing it, the requirements of the sunshine requirements. And we will no longer tape and televise workshops.
Second.
Discussion?
Just for a little bit of clarity, when I first came here, the first four years I was here, before we did the upgrades to this room, the constant complaints were we can't even see who you are up there. We cannot hear you. We can't hear what you're saying. And that's the reason that it was done, so that eventually we could be able to broadcast and do the things that we're doing in a much better quality for the public. That was, to me, the sole thing. It wasn't so we could increase recordings or different meetings or whatever the case may be. My opinion on it, as long as we're following all the state statutes and laws as far as the sunshine laws and we give people plenty of notice and opportunity to come up here, that should be it. If it's going to reflect anything whatsoever during the workshops, then we shouldn't, we shouldn't impose that on people where they can't speak their mind. But the public's always welcome.
Other discussion?
This really isn't a transparency issue. We're still going to hold the meetings. They're still going to be open to the public. So it's not like any one of the five of us is trying to hide anything. So everyone's more than welcome to attend.
We know a more discussion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Nay. We're moving on to eight B. Citing topic, discuss and or take action on city welcome sign lighting. Commissioner Basell, thank you.
Well, it's gotten better, of course, since the time has changed and the daylight. So, but, and it's already been alluded to. I was in one part of the country and Mr. Doughty was in another part of the country. So we haven't finalized the numbers yet on that. But I did want to give everyone an update that we're probably looking at to, it's going to take two hundred dollars for Middle Tennessee to run the juice down the pole. And then we'll have to put a meter and then, and then run underground wiring over to the lights. And then, then Mr. Doughty estimates that we should use LED lighting with a 10-year full warranty, one light on either side with a photo sensor that turns it on and off. And the bottom line, that's going to run us somewhere between two thousand and twenty-five hundred dollars a sign.
Per sign? All three signs are addressed?
Yeah.
There was one without electricity.
That would get, that would get juice to all of them and get them set up all the same way.
Okay, so two of them have poles next to them or near and one of them doesn't have at all.
They all have access. It's just the third one is the one that's further away that we're going to have to work with the landowner to get, let him, let us do that. But somebody has already, there's a meter on that pole. And so there's probably an inability there. It's just a matter of talking to somebody and getting it on. We don't think that would be a problem. Otherwise, MT, Middle Tennessee Electric can put our juice to the, to the next pole down. It just takes it longer to run it. So with that particular case, we might, we might have to consider, you know, setting a pole which runs a cost. My point is that I don't have actual numbers for you because like Mr. Doughty's out and I've been out too. But if we're looking at seventy-five hundred dollars to do that, is that something that we want to do now? Go ahead and get started and he'll, he'll give us a formal estimate and that sort of thing. Or, or is it something that we want to put into the budget process for next year?
What was left in the original budget to build those signs or was there anything left?
We had twenty thousand set aside.
We spent seven thousand on engineering and they spent over thirteen thousand. They spent about two hundred dollars over the thirteen thousand building.
The exact signs.
Just a question.
So there's no money available to this. We would have to appropriate seventy-five hundred dollars or what it turned out to be. I think seventy-five hundred dollars is probably a little high. But whatever it turned out to be, we would have to appropriate out of a capital improvement fund which has thirty-seven thousand dollars in.
But you could find the money in this year's budget is what they're
Well, we have thirty-seven thousand dollars in the capital improvement fund. We would have to move the money from that, whatever it costs, from the capital improvement fund into whatever the appropriate fund that Tom needed to pay the money out of.
Do we have anything else scheduled to come out before this fiscal year ends?
Capital improvement fund, just as soon as I talk about the next one, which is the history of
Those are the only two.
Those are the only two. And that's not going to
That this money would be available.
Anywhere close to that either.
I make a motion to approve the seventy-five hundred and hope it'll be less.
Second.
Discussion?
I would agree with my fellow commissioners that, you know, those signs, we spent a lot of money. We got nice signs out there. And the one thing I hear is as soon as it gets dark.
Can't find fair view.
I don't know if you can't find it, but I do know that, that it certainly diminishes our efforts. And I'd like to see us do it. And I think we have the money in that fund. And we don't really have, that's not enough money to really do anything grand and glorious with. So, you know, why don't we, why don't we use that money and go ahead and prove something that we've got ninety percent of.
And it was never discussed that them signs would be unlit. It was always discussed they were going to be lit from conception to death.
And they tried some inexpensive ways to do it, but
That never worked.
They didn't work. They didn't work. I mean, this, you know, they, they weren't, they weren't, they weren't
Well, they weren't direct or LED by far. So
No, no, no.
The projection of this lighting would be much, much stronger.
Before we vote, how much do you foresee in item C?
Well, we're going to talk about that.
What's the high end of that?
Fifteen thousand dollars.
So it's still within range of where we have them. We're good because that, that covers item E as well then, so.
Oh, yes. Yes.
Other discussion?
My only concern is I know the money's set aside. Is that a restricted fund that you're moving over? Or is that it's just a line item in the budget? For the capital improvement?
Capital Improvement Fund is a designated fund. It is not a reserve fund.
But it's unrestricted.
Unrestricted.
Right.
Because until we say this is capital improvement money of fifty thousand and it goes towards a library, it's just for whoever comes up with a request first.
And so when you, it's not a, is it separate? Or is it a restrictive fund that's separate? Or like, is there another account? It's just sitting there, right?
It's part of general.
I know, but I want him to say, so it's coming out of our general fund that's sitting in the account or I, what I'm wanting to know is, I know how the budget process and where are they lying? But you're not having, there's not a separate account. So it's all in our general account, basically. Okay.
I can answer it if you would like for me to.
Sure.
We, we have restricted funds
Yeah.
which are kept in a separate account.
Right.
We have designated funds, which are all monies that are book separations. But the actual money, the thirty-seven thousand, is in the main primary checking account. It is not in a different banking account.
And it is a budgeted line item?
It's a budgeted.
Already funded.
Entry that says of the five hundred thousand dollars that's in the checking account, thirty-seven-five of that is for capital improvement.
Right.
So all you're doing is saying, okay, we're reducing thirty-seven-five. There's no movement of money required. You'll just pay it out of the checking account.
It's also something that
Projections. Yes, go ahead.
It's also something that Mr. Hawke could do on his own and doesn't even need our approval to do it, so.
Right, right. But I, my question is, why I'm asking this is basically we base this year's budget on projections and we're a little off on this projection as of right now because Walmart is not quite, where it didn't open quite the same time and it's not quite, we've only have two weeks. So my concern is, even though it's in the line item, are we going to be short for the budget? We don't know that yet. And before I vote on it, I want to make very clear that we have enough money in there because this is something, if we, even though we budgeted this amount, this is something, could we wait to the next budget year? Or could we wait until we saw the Walmart money coming in or the projections? That's my only concern is spending the money until we know how this budget year is going to turn out.
Another way to ask Mr. Doughtery might be, when we come to the end of the year and we have to do taking out of the savings because the budget is over a hundred percent, this money could have been, and I think that's her direction.
Right, yeah.
This money could have been utilized in something else versus getting to the end saying, okay, we're at a hundred and fourteen percent. We've got to take the fourteen percent out of the reserves.
That's definitely a true statement.
Yes, I agree. That's what she's, I think she's trying to get him to answer.
But we also could have the vendors bill us on a hundred and twenty days and be in the next budget year when we pay it. There's multiple ways to accomplish the same thing.
Yeah.
And you've got to remember that at least one of the bids for this project came in over a hundred thousand dollars when we decided not to do it. And if we can get the entire thing done for twenty-seven thousand, I don't, I don't know why we would wait.
You know, part of the issue here is if we, if we, because it's under ten, we don't have to bid it. And Mr. Doughty is, is providing us with a reduced rate and some of the materials himself. So in order to keep the costs down. So the reality is, is, I mean, he's, it's not like, you know, we're, he's going to do it as he can, which may cause it to be. But we have to commit to him one way or the other in order to get it on his schedule. And, and that's my concern. You know, I, in defense of Tom, and we've, we've been working together, you know, on it. I've been trying to provide him some assistance. He, this is one of those judgment call areas. He can't tell us that the revenue we predicted with certainty is going to materialize. It would appear, and I think when he shows us a chart later on during his briefing, you'll see why that, that there's optimism that it, that it will. Or I wouldn't have even brought these up because I worked with him to make sure we could afford it before I even brought it up. So it's just, it's a judgment, it's a judgment call. Do we want to obligate ourselves to potentially spending seventy-five hundred dollars? Or do we want to wait, you know, five months and do it later? It's just how important is it? And I guess as far as I'm concerned, seventy-five hundred dollars is not a lot of money to go ahead and finish something that we've, we've been fooling with now for almost three years. I mean, we really, we really need to get this done because it looks foolish to spend that kind of money to set those things up and not be able to see them. That's just my way of thinking. So I understand your concern and I
Well, I understand yours.
It makes good sense. But I, I don't, if we were talking about seventy-five thousand dollars, then I, I would probably lean more towards your way.
One thing to throw out to too, when we decided on the budget that we were looking at and forecasting the money coming from Walmart, I think we only, we calculated what they had given us the figures and then we only looked at forty percent of that. Am I correct?
Well, I think we raised that a little bit, but I, I think, I think we looked, I think we looked at, I think there's 200,000 in the budget that we, we added in there for Walmart.
Two fifty.
So that was, we figured six months, but they didn't get open in December like we thought. So it's really based on five months, and to achieve that kind of thing, we really need to start seeing it April, May, and June.
I think we will.
And we, I think Tom was going to say he saw some of it this month, but the most we could hope for this month was, was two weeks. And January and February are historically slow. So even though the newness of the Walmart may offset some of that, people had already spent their Christmas money, so they didn't, they're not running in there to, to spend, spend a lot of money. But it's just...
Well, we didn't consider an outline as forecast as far as what we're going to get from it. We were very conservative with what we looked at.
223,933 with and without Walmart?
Well, I, in a way, I mean, I understand, no disrespect to that comment, I understand. But anytime you make projections on an item, a line item, that you don't have something to base it off for the previous year, is basically, you know, you're making a guess in the wind as far as...
Walmart don't make too many guesses in the wind.
Well, I mean, there was a lot of things, you know, riding on it. And basically, I mean, I know we had to compromise when we sat through the budget process. We, they were originally bringing us the whole projections. I know we came down a lot in our discussions, but, you know, basically, if you don't have a line item to base it on, you are basically taking something and just hoping it comes.
Well, we hope people pay their property taxes, too. But you have to have something, I mean, I'm not, this is just for discussion, and we're not, like I said, we're not talking about 150,000. We're talking about 7,500. That's, that's, that's out there.
250 or...
I'm talking about what he wants to spend is 7,500.
Okay, I was like, wait.
That, that's in there.
Well, officially, it's going to be more than that, because there's two more items to vote on after this one.
On item 8B, any other discussion on the city welcome sign lighting? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Item number 8C, discuss and or take action on History Village lighting?
Better numbers here, guys. These are, y'all want some copies?
Nick, you got the camera ready?
Yeah, I've got a copy for you. The little up form up there.
Showtime.
Nick, do you know how to do this?
The item agenda says lighting. Are there other discussions other than lighting in this presentation?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Cantrell, can you give us directions, being a subject versus wording versus other subjects? Should we have addressed that in the agenda change?
Yes, ma'am. The only thing we'll be able to discuss here would be the lighting itself, the way it's written. But you can't go back and amend your, your agenda at this time.
Okay. Proceed, Mr. Basell. Thank you.
I, I withdraw.
Item C is withdrawn. Item D, discuss and or take action on policy and procedure recommendation from city attorney on appointment to open seats on the City of Fairview Boards of Commission. Mr. Cantrell, can you go over your, we have a new presentation?
Uh, no. Basically, I just added one little item to it. It was a, and it was deferred, and so you'd have a chance to look at it. That was provided to you last time. What this basically does is it outlines a procedure for conducting elections to fill all seats. I think it was my intention to, and I think it covers any and all contingencies. We'd probably discover one somewhere that it doesn't, but I can't imagine one. It does recommend changing the application's form to add some information on there. One of the things being that the person who submits it has to put, be a blank on the, on the form for the date and time. That could become important only if you had, let's say you had five, five people for, for one seat, and each one of you voted for one of those five people, so you end up with five people with one vote. And you've got to have some way to, to reduce that so that, or you'd never have a winner. You'd have everybody voting for the same person each time. And that's where you would go back, and it's the only time you'd go back and be eliminating someone, is you'd take the last person in the line who's, who was on their, their date and time group and eliminate them, and then vote on four, so that you can get a majority vote. It also provides for, if you have a seat and you have, say, three seats, and you vote on the people, and two of them are clearly get a majority, their names is removed. And let's say you've got three other people, then you vote on those three people. I think also that depending on something you have on the agenda later, about the electronic voting, what the capability of that will be, whether you can list names up there and this kind of stuff. But the policy would be the same, and if the board passes this, I think it would be filed with the city recorder. And anytime we had an election, you could pull this out and review it. I would also propose to prepare a short outline, so that whoever was conducting the election would have that outline to go by, that won't have all of the wordiness that was necessary to explain what was going on. They would have an A, B, C that they could follow, and you could do that in each and every election.
Does everyone have one in their packet?
Mm-hmm. I do.
Do you have it in your packet? I, I don't have it in my packet.
Uh, this would be a...
And did you send a revision in the last 24 hours?
No, ma'am. You've got the revision, everyone got a copy of the revision at the last meeting. And it was deferred to this meeting.
You don't have it?
Previous one.
You sent something that said this is a revision in red.
That was for the city manager's committee.
Oh, something different. Okay, sorry.
Something different. Yeah, it's totally different.
Okay. So does everybody have what he's discussing to review and vote on tonight?
I don't have it with me, but we have received it, and I have read it.
I just wanted to reference where you were addressing your changes.
This was, it was just, this would be, not be in the form of an ordinance. It would not take two readings. It'd just be a policy. And if we need to change it later, we can, but it'll give you something that's a ready reference to refer to each and every time you have an election.
Move for approval. Second.
Discussion?
So, okay. If we're not, okay, explain to me, I need to see the ordinance really to feel...
It's not an ordinance.
So you're just wanting our opinion on the email policy, the email you sent us, the policy?
Yeah, it was given to you at the last board meeting.
Okay. Okay, gotcha.
And it's just a policy, and like I said, if it comes up, you can bring it up any time.
What it's going to do is it's going to make us do it the same way.
Every time.
Every time. There's no...
And if it passes, I will prepare an outline, so that you can follow like A, B, C, and D. And I'll have that distributed to everybody, so you'll have that. But we'll still have the policy to go back to in case you get something in the outline that's not covered, because it won't have the same amount of wordiness that this does, and then we can go back and refer to the policy.
Okay.
Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, item number E, discuss and or take action on electronic voting system. Mr. Johnson and Mr. Hall? Commissioner Johnson and Mr. Hall?
Thank you, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Board of Commissioners. Commissioner Johnson, at the last meeting, asked to get some quotes on the electronic voting system that the county has. Y'all have those before you, and we have a video that I'd like Nick to play for you.
Roll it.
You can roll it and take a good look at it.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Cantrell. I fail to thank you every time you do that so diligently.
Through the efficiency and discretion to run your meetings professionally, does it enable the level of transparency that's expected by stakeholders and the public today? To discover a better, faster, more professional voting solution, you'll want to watch this important three-minute message. Introducing Roll Call Pro from Current Works. From City Hall to the boardroom, there's an increasing push for more visibility and better record-keeping that traditional voice voting doesn't quite satisfy. Sequential verbal voting is always time-consuming, and no matter how things go, every roll call vote needs to be recorded. In larger organizations, this alone can eat up tremendous amounts of valuable time. And then there's hearing other members' votes as they occur, which can unduly influence the voting process. But what if you had a versatile solution that eliminated all of these issues while adding many other efficiencies and benefits? Go beyond traditional meeting requirements with Roll Call Pro from Current Works. Developed and manufactured in the U.S., Roll Call Pro is a unique computer-based electronic roll call voting system, utilizing advanced wireless technology, which makes it easy to install and even easier to use. This wireless technology also makes Roll Call Pro ideal for inexpensive retrofits in older buildings, handicapped access, and its portability allows for use in temporary facilities, too. Roll Call Pro is a simple but powerful solution. While packed with professional features, it requires no specialized computer knowledge to operate. It's the perfect solution to replace traditional voice voting or upgrade from an older system that's difficult to maintain. With Roll Call Pro, you can provide a large visual display of the proceedings, including board member names and status. With the request to speak function, attendees can see who has the floor and who's yet to speak. Because every member has a convenient wireless keypad, voting is secure, quick, and accurate. Voting results are instantly viewable only after all votes are cast and automatically logged in a voter history. Roll Call Pro increases the efficiency of the proceedings. Records that previously had to be kept by hand are now automatically recorded in the computer. Discussions can be managed from the visual display rather than requiring constant personal attention. When you're voting, you can accomplish in moments what took much longer with traditional voice voting. Roll Call Pro is scalable. Though it's excellent for even the smallest city councils and for larger county boards, it's designed to also accommodate corporate boardrooms, school boards, university councils, state legislative committees, and more. Because the Roll Call Pro system does not require major customization for every situation, and there are minimal installation costs, this system is also very affordable. Many organizations already go beyond the minimal requirements of the Open Meetings Act and broadcast their proceedings. Roll Call Pro offers another significant step towards this goal. Roll Call Pro enhances the efficiency and professionalism of your public meetings, making them more convenient and faster for members, and more open and transparent to the public. Add functionality, efficiency, and visibility to your public proceedings with Roll Call Pro. Call us here to speak with a representative right away. If you're interested in a no-obligation Roll Call Pro in-house trial, please fill out this short form. To get more detailed information about Roll Call Pro, click here. To share this message, click here. Thank you.
Vice Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Come here, and then y'all discuss your prices, range, and which, which one you actually want.
This is, this is something that I feel is really a possible transparency issue, where the workshops is not. How we vote and how the people perceive we're voting could be that issue. This system will record each and every vote of us and the nine members of the Planning Commission and keep it recorded, and each individual vote recorded. It can be printed out. It's, to me, it's just an amazing system. Like it said, it cuts down on time in the meetings. The county has been using this system for the last several years. It has sped their meetings up, and the one function that the mayor gestured during, on the, the part where it said that you actually hit the button to speak. If all five of us hit it, it keeps us in order, and then you could just recognize the next one that hit the button next to speak. So I mean, it really, it really, I feel, will help our meetings. And the 14,700 would cover all nine of the things, since I know we would only need five. But if we're going to do it, and that board is going to be voting as well, and their meetings are televised as well, I think that we need to, to get the premium system, and we do have the money. That's why I was asking Commissioner Basell about that, and I'm going to make a motion to approve the 14.7 to take care of the premium system.
First and second discussion?
Do we have to bid that? Or is it a specialized item that we wouldn't have to bid?
I think we'd have to bid it. Or...
I think you'd have to bid it, because the, if you put your requirements of what it's got to do, you'll find out whether anybody else can do it or not, and if nobody bids it, then you're fine. But I think that would be something that, that you would have to bid.
Or if these folks already have a contract with the state, they said they had...
If they had a contract with the state, you'd buy it in a state contract, then you would not have to bid it.
Do you want to amend that motion or withdraw for deferment?
Oh, no, I'm, we, I figured that was what we were going to do anyway. But if, if we can do it, my motion is to go ahead and have it approved. Otherwise, the city manager will go through the bid processes.
Second.
So do we know at this time if they're state-approved?
I don't think, city manager, you don't even know that, do you? I didn't think so.
I could find that out with Rogers Anderson in the morning.
Yeah, my motion is just to approve it if everything lines up. Otherwise, the city manager has the authority to go through the bid process.
Discussion?
Well, I still said, I think the, the roll call vote would be a great addition to the city. I do think that it would help with the meeting process. But I'm being consistent in the fact of I don't think we're in a place to spend money, even though it's in our budget. I'm not comfortable enough at this time passing or spending money.
Other discussion?
Clarification of the motion again. This is to look for him to move forward with the bid process.
If needed.
If needed.
Okay.
The motion was to approve the 14,700 as presented to Roll Call Pro. There was no statement of the bid or the not bid, or the state contract or not state contract.
I'd like to amend the motion.
And I question that, is how can, how can that be an actual motion if we have to go to bid? It's got to be part of the motion. Good to you.
I'd make, I'd like to make the amendment on that, that if it is part of the state bid, that we move forward. If not, that we execute bid process as we should.
Well, even if it is part of this, I mean, shouldn't we have to go through the bid process anyway? Or is a dollar amount...
If the state has a contract, it overrides.
If there's something that a municipality needs to buy in the state of Tennessee, if that particular item is on the state bid contract, then you do not have to bid it as a municipality, because the theory is that the state got the low bid when they procured that contract.
We have a motion on the floor. Second discussion?
Is this on the amended motion or is the original?
Amended.
And so the amended motion was if they didn't have...
It would be best if they were both with... It would be best if they were both withdrawn and it was set all in one place. Because I don't think you can make a motion if our requirement is to go to bid if it requires to go to bid.
Well, I already want to do it. I just want to make sure that we're...
Well, that's why I've asked twice. But obviously, that's not the intent of the motion. I mean, at that point, if our requirement is to go to bid, you know, I wouldn't be favorable of the motion.
Well, we can't do it. If we have to go to bid, we can't do it anyway.
With your amendment, yes, sir.
Well, isn't what we're trying to do here? Approve $14,700 and then turn it over to the city manager to use the most expeditious and legal manner by which to procure a system?
With the amendment, yes. With the original motion, it says, "Go buy it and write a check," which is against what our requirements are.
And if that's what the amendment says, we just need to vote on the amendment.
That's why I'm hovering in discussion over the amendment. Any other discussion? Those in favor of the amended motion?
Aye.
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 That negates the original motion? So, you have authority to go to bid and to bring back to any... Okay, I said that. You have authority to go to bid or report back as far as the state contract. Okay? All right, moving on. Discuss and undertake action on Resolution 04-14.
It's a resolution to set a public hearing for the purpose of obtaining public comment on the change of zoning of certain property in the city of Fairview, Tennessee, located on Highway 96 North near Interstate 40. Owned by the McRedmond family partnership, is shown on the Fairview Geological Listing of Assessment Row Map 18, Parcel 22, from RS 40 to Commercial General, 25.87 acres. Move for approval?
First and second discussion?
I did have a question on this because originally I... Well, basically, Mr. Stark's email that he sent about why not wait? And I had that same question of, you know, why would we go ahead and zone this commercial? And we sent it back down to the planning and they sent it back up with full approval. But my question for the city attorney is, it was explained to me at some point, and I don't know if this is factual, but if you could give us direction? If the property touches a commercial property, then we have to allow them to rezone it to commercial? Is that anywhere factual?
Zoning issues, you can't force the board to rezone something. And if the area... Generally, the Planning Commission considered that when they did that. Of course, the Planning Commission's recommendation is not binding on this board. All it is is a recommendation. Generally, they're not a legislative board. Only zoning can be changed by this board. But they are charged with, and I know in this instance did consider, what the land-use map said for this property. Now, a land-use map, and I'm saying this kind of backing into answering your question, but a land-use map is not a dictating document. A land-use map only shows what the suggested use of the area is. You look at the land-use map, and I'd be the first to say that if you consistently don't zone in accordance with your land-use map, you need to change your land-use map because something's wrong with what you're doing. But no, it doesn't have to... The only requirement for contingency of property is if you're going to annex something, it must be contiguous to existing city property. But, you know, the zoning is strictly the purview of this board, assuming that you consider what the Planning Commission... It's required to go to the Planning Commission. They can... They have to consider it. They don't have to make a recommendation. They can send it up without a recommendation. They can send it up with a recommendation. They can send it up with a negative recommendation. But the ultimate decision is this board's. And there's no requirement that you do or don't rezone it. Now, what it might be talking about, and I'll say this just in passing, that if someone comes in with a subdivision plot and it meets all the city requirements, then the Planning Commission has no choice but to approve that. That's not the case with zoning. Although, there is an abundance of case law that says the mere fact that somebody don't like it is not adequate reason for not doing it.
Well, one of the things when we rezone, and we... Being on the Planning Commission discussed this prior, the rezoning is, do we get in the practice of a city of just rezoning something for somebody to sell their property? Or... Because we lose control of what can come in and what can't. And I hate to say the word "control," but... So, what would your recommendation? If the land use is already... The land use map has already zoned that, then you would suggest that it would be the right direction to also, or...
Well, as to whether you rezonate or not is not my call. That's your call. But I would be very hesitant. And there are times when maybe it's justified to zone something that's not in accordance with your land-use map. But there's a danger in that in that you... If you've got a good reason, that's fine. You could get into a thing of spot zoning. You don't want to do that. But if your land-use map says that it meets that, then you have every right to do that. Whether you do it or not is, again, your call. I would be reticent to go against my plans. It's just like a situation that you have, that if you consistently do that, it's like consistently granting variances. Anytime you grant a variance, if you don't have a real good reason, you weaken your codes restriction. And anytime that you rezonate something that's not in accordance with your land-use map, et cetera, you weaken your land-use map. But as to whether you rezonate this or not, based on the recommendation of the Planning Commission, is this board's call. I don't know if anyone here represents the McRedmond family or not. Do they have representation?
Their representation on this property this evening? Item F is deferred.
That would require G to be deferred also.
G being deferred.
Since we're in the middle of that, can we ask you another question about that, Larry? Just for clarification, could you give us some history on case law? Based on what Commissioner Carroll said, if you've got commercial on one side and commercial on the other side, and you want to be zoned commercial, but the board arbitrarily says, "No, we don't want you to be commercial," can you tell us about case law and state history where the board was forced by the court to zone it commercial?
The appellate courts are very slow and very reticent to... If you're acting on the recommendation, your Planning Commission, you're following your land-use map, and that area is to be commercial, this part's commercial, this part's commercial. The courts don't generally touch that for this reason. Zoning is basically a legislative function. The court will not substitute its judgment for a legislative function. If you file a lawsuit on it, you file a motion to dismiss, they'll tell you. Real quick, that this doesn't involve a court action. This is a legislative function, and the court don't do legislative functions. That's what the history of the law has been on that. Now, there is lots of instances where courts have come and said, where you had a subdivision or whatever that met all the requirements of the city, and some group or groups said, "We don't like this for various and sundry reasons," and the board refused to approve that. The court will in no very short time tell you that if they meet all the requirements, that that's a definite classic definition of arbitrary and capricious. But that is not a legislative function. The zoning is basically a legislative function in the history of the courts is... They... I won't say they'll never touch zoning, but when they touch zoning is when it's things like some obvious arbitrary and capricious action that generally don't get involved in zoning issues. The court... Excuse me. The court does get involved in zoning issues, but not in rezoning issues.
Absolutely. I just didn't know if you knew any case law off the top of your head. Mr. Hall, could you, since this is the second agenda item this evening that people are not here or they're not represented, do you know if the codes department sent out notice to these people to let them know they needed to be here? We usually have a codes department member here, and I don't see Mr. Bledsoe here, and...
Apparently, that got overlooked, and I will put things in place to where we don't overlook this any longer. You know, so Mr. Bledsoe is off this week, too.
Right, he's on vacation, so...
So, it could be an oversight on my part, but not looking too close enough to make sure that there are no factors.
Okay.
I'll put that in both departments.
Yes, sir.
Administration and codes.
And the last thing, Commissioner Carroll, could you please expound on the fact that how you said we would lose control if we rezoned it? I don't understand what control we would lose, because no matter whether it was a subdivision or a commercial business or whatever, it's still going to come to the Planning Commission unless it was a single-family dwelling. What control would we lose?
Well, and, you know, I agree, that's probably not the best wording to use. But one of the things about it is, I just didn't know if the city was in the practice of rezoning somebody's property for them to sell it. It's one thing if these landowners came and said, "We want to develop this property." I would be all for, you know, listening. And I just... Because there's so much residential, the way this property is set up, there is commercial on sides, and I understand that, but the drive, it's basically wanting to rezone behind. So, I'm just questioning whether or not, you know, this is the practice we want to get into and what was the legal aspect of it. I mean, I respect the fact that this has gone to the Planning Commission, and the majority of them probably spoke about it, but it brings up a good question to me, you know, what is the process? I mean, do we have to rezone it just because they want to sell their property and there's other commercial? I do like the overlay. I mean, that would be a great example of, you know, if we wanted to meet the overlay, then obviously, you know, we would want to consider if an individual wants to come. And if that's already considered in the overlay commercial area, then that's another thing. So, it's something that I just wanted clarification before we went to vote.
If I could state something else, actually, when the people request the rezoning is not up to the city. The individual can put his application in any time he wants to. But the facts that you consider is your call.
I've got one quick question. I'm just curious about this right here. Let's just say that I came to this board and requested my property be rezoned, and you asked me what I was going to put on it, and I said a daycare center, and they said, "That's great," and they rezoned it. Daycare center never came to attrition. Six months later, eight months later, I'm going to put a gas station on it if it was zoned for that right there. Is there anything you could do to change that?
Well, I think daycare centers and gas stations are different zones.
Well, let's just change it to a clothing store or just something else besides what I originally said it was for.
Something else besides what I originally said, as long as it met the zoning, no.
Because nothing the board could do.
As long as it met the requirements for, you know, the building and codes and this type of thing, no.
Well, and this is one of those things where it backs up to residential area, even though there's commercial. So, that's one of the reasons that, you know, I think we need to be mindful. We've had other people come and ask for rezoning that we typically didn't because, A, it was right across the middle school or... There's been other reasons. So, I'm just wanting clarification on what, you know... Yes.
What commercial doesn't back up the residential?
Well, yeah, that's a good point. That's a valid point. You're right. Most commercial does.
Well, they also require buffers in there, too.
I'm having open discussions, so...
Right, right.
I'm listening to your... Because I wanted...
I think when the discussion was about the property there at Cumberland and Highway 100 and it being so close to the schools, the school was a different issue, the kind of business that would be available to the school. But I mean, if you think of all the commercial up and down Highway 100, it all backs up to residential, and most of what's on 96 backs up to residential, so...
And I can't imagine restricting this as close to the interstate as it is.
Yeah. I just don't. But they're not here, so it's really...
Going back to the Cleveland thing was the discussion, because I kind of looked into it a little bit and found that they could tell if they're going to put anything out there. Once it's rezoned, then if something else could change, as far as that goes. Unbeknownst to them even, business deal fall through, so... But it's zoned already, and as long as it meets all the requirements for the building codes and everything else, it's going to go in there no matter what we want.
Being deferred, we'll move on to H. Discuss and undertake action on Resolution 05-14.
Resolution 05-14 is a resolution requesting the Fairview, Tennessee, city judge with concurrent general sessions jurisdiction for criminal offenses will be held in conjunction with the August 7, 2014 Williamson County election, Tennessee general election.
Move to approve?
Second.
First and second, I just have a question of where did this come from? Who asked for this? Just give me some background, please.
Sure. Actually, it came from me, because anytime that we have a county election and we have a city election also, in the past, the city has, and we generally want to get that election on with the ballot with the county's general election. And the way you do that, anytime we have these, I generally call up Ms. Ann Beard down there and say, "Okay, you're having a county election. This one involves us. You still need the resolution to put us on the ballot." And unless we wanted to call a special election in the city and pay for it, we need to be on the county roll. And I always do this when I have a county election come up, if we have a city election. And all this resolution does is request that that be put on there and gives... Grants me the authority to get a copy to the election commission within five days after if this board approves that. And that will have to be a certified copy. And I've already talked with this brand about how we'll work that out. I'll make sure that gets to Ms. Ann Beard if the board sees fit to approve it. I didn't want it to get down to a thing where you can't get it on the county election, then the city's got to call a special election. And since our city judge by state statute and by the charter also has concurrent general sessions jurisdiction for criminal matters in the state, that part would have to appear on there, then we would be having a election for just him to be the municipal judge also. So, we wanted to lump that. Now, that part would be on there, the part about the state part would be on there regardless. But we want to get the municipal part on there also so that we don't have to have a separate election for the municipal judge.
Great, thank you. Any other discussion?
Now, I have a question for you, Larry. Just in there may be a timing issue I don't know about, but we have a city election this year in November. Back in the history, if you look back at the history of voting records, the last time we had a city election, we had over 2,000 votes cast. The last time we had a county election where this one will be set for, there was 725 votes cast on the county and the city. I've been approached by many citizens thinking that if we're going to elect a city judge, they want the most city people represented in that. Why could we not have it in November when we're having our regular city election?
Because you're... The part about the state part runs out in August. We're running into control with the general sessions.
I just needed clarification.
And you don't need to split those because it gets really hairy. Yeah. And then, the one we have in November, we will also come back with another resolution to put our city election on the ballot with it to be held at the same time that the county election is, so that it'd be... You know, your polls here will have everybody listed for county and city.
All right. So, will you vote for city judge twice?
No, sir.
You will only officially vote for the actual judge candidate in November?
Right.
Gotcha.
I'm sorry. No, it'll be in August.
So, you won't vote for him in November? It'll already be done?
Correct.
Yes.
Okay. I just need to clarify it with some people.
Yeah. That'll already be done, and then the other candidates will be on there in November.
It'll go into the state election.
Right.
Other discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any opposed? Item I, discuss and/or take action on Bill 2014-07.
It's an ordinance for an amendment to the City of Fairview, Tennessee budget for fiscal year 2013-2014 budget. Move for approval. Second.
Mr. Tom, would you like to make a comment at all? Put you on the spot, but... Just, you write the check, you get to speak. Any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Item J was deferred. Item K, discuss and/or take action on vacant beer board seat. We had a resignation from Mr. Thomas presented to the board. Do we have additional applications, Ms. Johnson? At this time, there would be no action. I'll request the city manager and recorder process for advertisement on the website and any other deemed media that is beneficial, and have that as we receive applications back on the agenda. Any other comments from the board on that item? Item L, discuss and/or take action on city manager contract. Mr. Cantrell?
I had previously emailed each one of you the, a draft of a contract for the city to employ a city manager. As I stated at that time, that I only sent this to the commissioners and the mayor. I did not provide a copy of this contract to Mr. Hall. Normally, when I do something for the staff or anything that involves the city, I always send Mr. Hall a copy, or whoever, I've done this with previous city managers, simply because I don't want to be communicating with someone within the organization, even though he, I have his permission to do that with the staff, to communicate with him, but I don't want something going to them that he's not aware that's out there. I don't want to get into an embarrassing situation where somebody sees him down in the parking lot and says, "Oh, by the way, did you know about such and such?" And he doesn't. But Mr. Hall's in a unique position in that he's actually the only person who works directly for the board, and this is the board's contract, and I wanted the board to have the opportunity to review it, and if they agree with it, fine, it's your contract. If there's anything that they wanted to change, I had requested that you notify me. I didn't hear anything, but that's, that's fine, it's still your contract. If there's anything that you want changed in there, as long, and I say this tongue-in-cheek, as long as it's not illegal, I'll be happy to change it. Otherwise, if you're satisfied with it, the board would, would be the one to appoint someone to present the contract to, to Mr. Hall, and if, upon his approval, then authorize the mayor to sign the contract on behalf of the city.
Move to approve and designate a city attorney to work with Mr. Hall on securing his signature and authorizing the mayor to sign on behalf of the board.
Second.
First, second, any other, any discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Nay.
Nay. My point of voting no is on the three years, and that was previously discussed. Item number M, discuss and/or take action on resolution 06-14.
It's a resolution to approve a contract of employment between the City of Fairview, Tennessee and Wayne Hall as city manager for the City of Fairview, Tennessee pursuant to the City of Fairview, Tennessee Charter and Tennessee Code Annotated 621101. Move to approve. Second.
First, second, any discussion?
Question, Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Would it be appropriate to go ahead and approve that tonight, Mr. Cantrell, or do we need to wait to see if Mr. Hall makes changes to the...
You could do it one of two ways, Mr. Commissioner. You could either approve it, subject to Mr. Hall approving the contract. Basically, the, the resolution, and if, if he doesn't approve the contract, then we just hold the resolution in abeyance until we get a contract that he does approve. Because the resolution only does something about authorizing the approval, and that, of course, wouldn't be done until he approves it, because he'd approve it first, and then the, the mayor now has authorization to sign it. The reason that I sent out, and I apologize for doing that, that, but I wanted to get it to you as quickly as I could. The third item on there was relating to Mr. Hall's acting as the interim city manager. I had prepared that paragraph earlier, should have inserted it into the resolution, and for some reason, hit the button and didn't do it. It's common practice that if a person is hired as a permanent employee, has served in an interim position, that the board acknowledge and ratify the previous, his, his actions that are in the course of his previous job and in furtherance of that job. And that's the reason that was added. But if you would, would like to defer the item on the resolution until the next board meeting, I will have time to have gotten Mr. Hall's signature on any changes that he desired, because if he, if he desires any changes, we're going to have to bring it back to the board anyway. So I think it would probably be simpler just to defer that action until Mr. Hall get the contract to him, and he approves it, and we get the mayor to sign it.
I would be happy to make the motion for defer all if you guys withdraw.
Thank you. Withdraw.
Second.
Make a motion to defer it until...
That was, I'm sorry, I thought that's what you were doing.
You, you preempted and seconded, okay.
Preempted.
All right, any discussion? All those in favor of deferment?
Aye.
Any opposed? I can wait to my statements, but I, while we're still on the agenda items, I would like to see, and I've spoke with city manager about this, I would like to see that anything or all things deferred are automatically on the next agenda item unless stated differently. Because if it's deferred and then it's dropped off the plate and it's not discussed, it may be because it's moot point. But if it's just deferred and it's never put back on, that's a lot of work. I mean, I physically go back through the agendas for the deferred items to share with the recorder, and I don't think that's my job or necessary for anyone. I believe it's an automatic, and it would be good efficiency that we have deferred items automatically on old business unless something is stated, such as this is deferred till next year.
I agree 100%, and that is the complete difference between deferred and tabled. Tabled is, is not brought back up until you say it is, but deferred should always go to the next meeting unless a meeting further out has been designated. I agree.
Okay, so stated to that, city manager directing the recorder to make sure that that's a running to-do agenda, let's say, and that'll help everybody, because I know I've, I've failed to bring some things back up that were deferred, and months later going, why did this not, you know, become precedent? So thank you for that. City manager, discussion, sir?
Thank you, Mayor. I'd like to announce tonight that I have hired Frank Humber to take over the codes and planning division. Hopefully, he'll be on board the middle of April. I think it's a great hire for this city. I think he's going to do us a great job. We have had Taco Bell...
Just a second, go back there. You've hired him as codes director?
Planning and codes director.
And what, what is his hire date?
The middle, he should be here, but he's going to let me know. He's working out of notice at this point in time, and he'll let me know what day he can be here, somewhere between the 11th and the 18th of April.
Okay. All right, great. Sorry to interrupt. Go ahead, next.
We've had Taco Bell break ground this week. We've had other numerous inquiries in our city this week, some subdivisions, as well as some more tenants over here in Bowie Commons. I'm not at liberty to say who it is just yet, but we do have several inquiries right now, so. And that's all I have tonight.
Excellent. Thank you, sir. Miscellaneous updates, staff comments this evening.
Tom, we told you you didn't have to do that. When you sit at the table, you can sit at the table.
Put that mic up.
Works for you, it works for him.
Y'all hear me? All right, I thought I'd do things a little different. Trying to, basically, day-to-day operations, accounts payable, accounts receivable, learning FlexGen, and getting a feel for the way city government runs. If you look at the graph, I've started an analytical process, and it'll go through the budget process, but if you look at the graph, it says fiscal year-to-date revenue versus expenses. I think this is a great way to look at cash flow. If you see expenses, you see, we usually run in the red, usually run in the red, revenue being quite a bit less than expenses, and then you go through November to December, the, and a little bit into January, the, well, and into February also, the payroll, I mean, property tax season. So as of today, we are averaging monthly revenue of $458,615, and our average monthly expenses have been $523,497. That gives us an annual total in revenue of $3,210,310, and annual expenditures of $3,664,481, giving us a total deficit of $454,170,96. If you look at the revenue side, our top revenues avenues have been, of course, property tax, local sales tax from the county trustee, state sales tax, state shared local sales tax, and you can read on down the line, wholesale beer tax, fifth on the line right now. That, starting out here, I wouldn't have thought that. If you look at the expenditures, now, right now, I'd like to get this divided up a little differently. Right now, the way our accounting's set up, we've got it set up into our departments. General government has spent the most, police department, I'd like to get it set up where we're dividing it out into more line items, payroll, such, but right now, this is what I'm working with. Fire department, and then parks is fourth. As you go through, the one thing everybody, on everybody's mind, I guess, is Walmart, and hearing the things that are happening in the city, it's very encouraging. I think just, just based on where we started off in July and where we are now, I think as far as a finance person, I, I think we need to be cautiously optimistic. I think, I think we need to not just stop all spending, of course, but just be very, think about what we do. We, as far as, that's our annual outlook as far as where we stand today, as far as February 28. Looking at February, we took in revenues of $573,954. Again, property taxes led the way with $327,689. Local sales tax was next, state sales tax, and state shared, shared sales tax carried in forth. And city court fines and costs are, we had a busy February as well. One of the items that I've really been watching is the sales tax. Our average, this, our average for the local sales tax for the year has been $70,420. We, now, this is numbers that are not on this graph, but this is the numbers I just received, that I will, I received from a letter from the Department of Revenue. Our local sales tax from the county will be $87,000 this, this, at the end of this month, end of March. Then also, now, state sales tax is not affected by local sales tax, but then the, also, the state shared sales tax average for the year through February was $31,614. The check coming, that just came today, was right at, just a little under $39,000. So, give or take, the sales tax was up approximately $27,000 of what we normally get for, for this next month coming up. I know I'm talking February, but I'm talking March for those numbers. I know everybody's kind of, kind of interested. I know I am.
$27,000 represented what timeframe?
Two weeks.
That's two weeks in January.
I just want to make sure that...
Okay, the last two. They started out on the 15th of January. As far as expenses, as you see, our expenses have really started going down. I've got, they, we've got some other outlays coming, but we've, we've done our best we can to just curb as much as we can. But the police department led the departments in expenses this month, in February, with $95,000, and then general government, $85,000, fire, $60,000, and then it drops way down. Parks had $20,000. As far as my report, that is about it. I'm excited about the budget, going through the budget. I'm, like I said, I'm, I'm talking to MTS and also to the comptroller, getting numbers on, on projected... There's a lot of things happening in the city that I'm excited about, and that's all I have so far.
Great, thank you. Can I make one suggestion, please?
Yes.
Could you please have the date printed on anything that you give us?
Yes.
Even if it's just little in the corner, that would be helpful. That's how I keep records of things.
Yes.
That would be helpful. Ms. Johnson, can you tell us what percentage of delinquencies we have on property taxes?
I've got that number.
Or whoever?
It's 5% for 2013 taxes.
For 2015?
2013 taxes.
Okay. I thought, oh, I'm delinquent. All right, 2013, 5% delinquencies, and what time is that turned in? I mean, when collections are starting now, is there a certain time in March that that turns over?
No, the 2012 taxes will be turned over on Monday to clerk and master.
Okay, because I had someone making notification yesterday, so I was curious, when did they start? Delinquent notices have not started?
Not for 2013s, no, ma'am.
Okay. I wonder if Murray County's different from Williamson County in their timing? Mood question, but they had already received a postcard, so I was curious if we had sent out something. What is sent out for delinquencies? A letter or a card?
A letter has been sent out traditionally. That's something that I've been talking to Tom about, working on being more proactive in that.
I don't know the cost difference if we did a postcard or something.
Postage is a lot less.
All right, thank you. Anything else? Updates?
Tom, could you...
I'm sorry.
You spoke to the fact overall by the month, and spoke of our deficit, and we were, our revenues were upended by what we were spending. Could you speak to the fact of how that has changed since you have taken over in the last four months where you've done the job? Could you tell us how many months out of those four have been reversed? If we could put the first slide back up, Nick.
It, it does look good on my side, but I...
I just, I just wanted to point that out. You started, I believe, in November.
Well, I do know right there in November, right, there were two pretty big debt service I do know through there, there was a big payment to the schools before I got here, and I do know there was a lot of insurance-type payments, a big payment to TML early on. So I guess, and, and there were some other payments that... So, I guess, and, and there were some other payments that I haven't, I haven't been faced with, so I don't.
I was trying to toot your horn without you doing it.
I take credit for a few, a few smaller items, but there were, there were some pretty big items that, that I, you know, I have not been faced with during my tenure.
I've been told by a few department heads that you've, you've crunched down on spending, and I applaud you for that, so.
Well, we are, the biggest thing we're looking at right now is overtime and part-time salaries. We're, you know, there are a couple areas where we're a little bit ahead, but, you know, everybody's, everybody has been great to work with, and I think the biggest thing is, is being communicative and saying, hey, we're, we're above here, let's, let's pull on the reins a little bit, and it's, so far, it, it has helped, but at the same time, I've, I've looked back enough to know, as some of the expenditures have come back, and, you know, like I said, that I think it's a timing thing, and I do know as far as, we've got two big outlays that I'm researching right now, as far as a fire truck payment, and, and I think for this pavement over here that we need to pay on, I think it's to the tune of $185,000 in debt payments that I'm, I'm looking at very cautiously and have calls into, so as soon as they hit, it, it probably, there's not a whole lot I can do about it. But we are doing what we can to curb spending.
Thank you for your reference.
Thank you.
If I could add something about this.
Go ahead.
Couple of things that you need to know when you look at this. This is pure expenses and revenues, and revenues do not include money that we infuse, say, from the park fund or from the school fund, or, though the expenses do. So, say, the $80,000 that we, we gave to the schools is up there as an expense, but it's the $80,000 we moved in order to be able to pay that is not in there.
Right.
So, that contributes to part of that. The, Tom has done a great job, and I don't, I, I agree with you 100%, it's been a pleasure what I've been able to work with him on this, but this is the life cycle of a city. And, and while your comments notwithstanding and his efforts notwithstanding, it wouldn't matter what year you put up here, they would all show deficit the first half until the property tax comes, and then the property tax puts us over and we run better the second half of the year, getting ready to go back into the deficit the first half of the next fiscal year. So, so as this trends on out, you'll see the red continue to go down, partially because of Tom's efforts, but partially because that's the trend, you'll also see the blue level out higher than the red, and that's how we build up the surplus. That's why when we do the city audit, we do the city audit as one day. We are balanced one day a year because cash flow-wise, we're almost never balanced. We're either above or below, and it averages out on that final day of the year, we have to be totally balanced. And that's, that's where that comes from. But I don't.
Thank you, sir.
I'm not trying to water down your comments, I think Tom's doing a great job.
Well, and I, I will say, I agree, Tom, you're doing a great job, Mr. Hall, but I think y'all both came in, realized where we were in the budget year, and really, I know you supported Tom in, you know, tightening things up, and I, I think that that needs to be applauded, and we appreciate that.
Other comments from the staff this evening? City attorney comments? I done lost my agenda, you next? Yes, sir, you're next.
Thank you, Mayor. The only thing I have is, I've been instructed to, and right now, I am delivering Mr. Hall a copy of the contract, and when he has a chance to, to review it and discuss it with anyone he desires, he and I will get together and, and get any recommended changes that he wants to make, if we need to bring it back to the board. If there's not any changes, we'll get him to sign it and we'll get it to the mayor. Thank you.
Thank you. Comments from the commissioners? Commissioner Bissell?
Thank you, Mayor. I want to apologize, I just did not catch the wording on that agenda item about the history village. Time is of essence on that, and I was, would like for us to, if at all possible, have a special meeting on Monday if we could, if everybody has some time available to do that. The reason, reason being that the proposal that I intended to put forth has the park maintenance staff actually doing most of the construction, and as we all know, spring has finally sprung, and things are turning green, and they'll be in grass cutting season here shortly, and so they have a small window of about two or three weeks that they can get this done, so getting it started is very important to them, because it's going to take about two weeks, not continuously, but it'll take two weeks for the concrete and all to settle if we approve it. So, I'd like to, I don't know if.
Lunchtime?
Well, I, I was thinking, I know that Commissioner Carroll is supplying, say, from what, 10 to 12 or something like that? I didn't know what the mayor's schedule was like on Monday, or you or Commissioner Sutton, but if we could do it Monday morning, say, at 11 o'clock, I don't, my presentation's not going to take very long, and, and, but, and I hate to do that, I would, I would rather, but time is the problem, and I just didn't catch that the agenda was so lightly worded.
1:30 is, I have appointments that morning.
What's your schedule for Monday?
I can do 1:30.
1:30? You can't?
I can, but that, if four of y'all can be here, then.
I mean, I'm fine with evening, I can do it after, you know, do 6 o'clock if I know, you know, I can do that.
I just didn't want to wait a full two weeks.
No, we have Thursday evening already earmarked for a workshop. We can add 30 minutes before and be here at 5:30 Thursday and.
That still costs them a week, but.
Well, it's supposed to snow according to Monday.
Oh, mercy, let's do.
No, it's not going to snow.
Well, that's.
They got flourished possibility next week.
Can you be here at 5:30?
They can build in the cold, they just can't build.
Thursday.
Well, concrete is an issue, right?
What about 5:30 on Thursday? Would 30 minutes be appropriate, or do you need more time?
Uh, I mean, I, I don't, I mean, I gave y'all the documents, if you'll look.
Would you be able to do 5:30?
If you'll look through them, yeah, I mean.
We already have a 6 o'clock, would 5:30 be okay?
Is it budget at 6?
No, 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 we have middle Tennessee electric.
Middle Tennessee.
Call it for tomorrow.
Well, tomorrow night?
No, not night, but maybe in the morning or lunchtime or something.
Well, would you be able to advertise it?
You've got the town to get it advertised.
We don't have time, we don't have time for tomorrow.
Yeah.
1:30 Monday or 5:30 Thursday?
They can't make it at 1:30 Monday.
Okay, 5:30 Thursday.
I can take a late lunch Monday, I could probably.
You make 1:30 on Monday?
We look at it less than an hour?
Oh, yeah.
I can do it. I'll try, I, I can.
Okay, so.
1:30 Monday?
Hold on. Can everybody be here 5:30 on Thursday, since we're already going to be here?
Well, I think the question is expediency, as far as getting a project going. I don't have a problem with Monday.
Yeah, I'd like to, I'd hate to see us lose, I mean, they wouldn't be able to order supplies till, till we approve it, and so.
Who cannot be here 1:30 Monday? Okay, let's do it then.
Thank y'all for doing that.
1:30 Monday.
And, and y'all, if you get a chance, look over your package and we'll have.
Can I ask one question on that? I did, and I didn't see it on there, is the farmer's market, are you giving it any consideration in these plans?
No. This is strictly designed to get the Triangle School and the post office and the Medical Plaza open for our July 4th stuff. This is no additional to that.
It needs to be broadcast out by. Okay, so by Monday at 1 o'clock, oh, that's 24 hours, so, as long as it's posted.
Just put it out tomorrow, which is Friday, and then it'll be good on Monday. But no, I, I didn't know farmer's market, no anything addition, this is all about the plan that Dr. Rice and I came up with, to have that part of it completed so that we could open on July 4th, and then Phase 2, Phase 3, all of that stuff. Basically, what, what I was trying to accomplish, and I was going into more detail, but what I was trying to accomplish was getting us to an actual completion point, that we're, we're not continuing in the same circle over and over and over again.
We're after a CEO.
Right.
How about that?
And that's what this will do for us.
Okay, any other discussion, Mr., Commissioner Bissell?
No, ma'am, thank you very much.
Commissioner Carroll?
I appreciate everybody doing that with me.
Um, there's just a few things that I wanted to address and go back to tonight and just kind of make comments. As far as the workshop discussion, I really am for transparency, I just don't want to mess with the integrity of the system, and it's how the system has been put forth and done, and most cities, it's done this way. Now, I can't give you numbers, I haven't researched them all, but, so I just wanted to make this statement, to me, it's, I think we are transparent, I'm very proud of the fact that our, our meetings are taped and aired, you know, my parents love the fact, who don't live in Fairview, they love to watch the video, that people can view it, so I really support that, but the, the whole workshop, to me, even though it's said and done, but the whole workshop, to me, is part of the process, and something about being able to relax, because the only thing we can discuss as a whole is here or in a workshop or, I guess, you know, executive meetings. So, I just really want to kind of make the statement and let the citizens know what my thought process is when it comes to this. I know I did a lot of nays tonight to things that I wasn't opposed 100% to, but I'm sticking firm and with the fact of the budget, and I think it's our responsibility to try to be conservative with the budget and each year reach the budget without having to do lots of budget amendments. I did hear, and I'm excited about how it's looking, I hope Walmart does everything that we want it to, and, but I, and I know the budget through the years, there's highs and lows, and being in this seat for the last couple of years, I've seen the process of that. I think the reason the Walmart money bothers me so much is it's just not how I physically work, you know, it's different when we have a line item, we can project, and then we can project the next year's budget, but we were having to make, and I know Walmart knows what they're talking about, but we were making projections, and, you know, just to tell you, makes, make you feel better that I worry about it. I sit here and I think, are we going to make it? Are we going to make that, you know, I pray about it, I think about it, I check in about it, where are we at the, the budget? Because to me, even though we can hit a reserve and we can tap in our reserve, but are we being physically responsible every time if we have to hit our reserves to make a budget? We should be able to balance a budget and make our projections as close as possible, and if we go through the process and only use line items from the previous year, then I think we can. So, I just kind of want to explain, I, do I think we're going to make it? Yes, I think they're all right, we're probably going to make it, but it's still not being in the clear yet, not getting a whole month of Walmart yet, I'm still not in the business to, you know, it all adds up, 10,000 here, 7,000 here, and before we know it, we were at the end of the year going, oh, we better hit reserves because we didn't shave when we could, so I appreciate the city staff working hard, trying to, you know, cut back on spending, make sure that we're where we need to be.
That's all I have tonight, thank you. Thank you. Commissioner Sutton?
I just want to thank everybody for the hard work that they're doing, and I've got all the confidence in the world in the direction that we're going. I've had a little bit of conversation with City Manager Hall about the possibilities of some things coming, and we're growing, commercial-wise, tax-based-wise, it's, it's looking very good for the city, and I concur, we should always be concerned about the budget, which I think fiscally responsible, we've all tried to be, looking at that at all times, what we got coming in, what we got going out, and you've heard me say before, there's, day one is budgeted, day two, it's, day, day one, we're balanced, that one day of the year, after that, you're not, for X number period of time, just because of the way the money comes in, so it's, it's always good for us to keep an eye on it. As usual, we have somebody here, and there's a reason that I want to bring this up again tonight, Lee Dreyer's here, we've got three people, four people running for City Court Judge, Lee, you weren't here a while ago, if, if you could stand up for just a second, you want, we, we passed something a while ago that you, I'm sure you'll be interested in, it'll be forwarded down to the Election Commission and everybody be made aware, is that right, Larry?
Yes.
Okay. Go ahead and tell them where it is.
Are you done, Commissioner Sutton?
I asked him to explain something, so he'll know, he wasn't here a while ago. You'll be on the ballot in August. In August, yes, sir. Along with everybody else that we're doing it, so I appreciate the comment about calling the Election Commission. I, I think, I don't like, and I know there's, everything's business and everything's a dollar, but I don't like putting a price on a vote that a person has a right to make. If they want to save money on it, in my opinion, they should move all these elections up in May, I'll move all of them to August, and you, you can save that money too. I know there's reasons why they don't want to do that, but I'm just, that's their reasoning and not mine, but if you really want to save money, that's what it's all about, move it up there. I would love for them to have satellite voting in all the precincts that we have, if, if anything, cut it down from the two weeks that we've got now to three days, a Thursday, Friday, and a Saturday, if they have to rotate it, just so they give the elderly and people that are disabled an opportunity to vote. Just to remind you again, it'll be on the website where you can get those early voting, not early voting, but the.
Absentee.
Absentee voting, if you qualify for it, so feel free, and if you have any questions, just contact City Hall, you can contact me, and I'll help you get them, because I think y'all will be allowed to vote. That's it, thank you.
I want to highlight what's in the legislative now on the, if I can read all this, it is a, it's been in the House and it's been in the Senate, and it looks like it will be, it's in the Finance Ways and Means Committee, and the reason I'm bringing it up, it's the subject you're discussing, Commissioner Sutton. It is now in the legislative floor to vote to authorize the County Election Commission in counties that share a municipality to designate by agreement a polling place, an early voting location within the limits of the municipality, but outside the boundaries of one of the respective counties. It authorizes voters residing, residing within the limits of a municipality that is located within two counties to vote at the location established by such agreement. So, once that is voted, if that is voted up as a law, that's what we're trying to discuss, correct?
It is, but they'll still have the discretion of where they're going to have it at, but that's the discretion of the Election Commission itself, not the County Commission, but the Election Commission, so.
Okay, so Evans is delivering it and Hale is, and if you have a comment or a positive or negative input, Mr. Jeremy Durham would love to hear from you, he's on the floor, and, you know, there's other people that might have the same opinion, positive or negative, but when it's on the legislative floor, it's time to call your legislators and be able to express the concerns, and I appreciate you bringing that forward. There are several others, I've got, being involved in the Mayor Caucus, there are several on the floor. Annexation is a really big one, and it's discussing keeping the moratorium on any and all.
Forest annexations.
Annexations that are proposed by the city, not by the landowner, and this is saying that they would forward the current moratorium that was to end May 15th, 2014, to May 15th, 2015, and extended an additional year on annexation by a municipality by means of ordinance in order to annex territory being used primary for residential or agricultural. Now, where this affects Fairview is if indeed we see the opportunity and annexation is a way to move forward, and we feel it is of the betterment of the whole, this legislation is saying we do not have as a municipality the right to do so, and it is coming out of Knox County, that this has been something done that was, you know, maybe in a power move, and now it's becoming law, and all municipalities are being faced with this reality as it's on the floor right now. and now it's becoming law, and all municipalities are being faced with this reality as it's on the floor right now being voted. There's also conversation about eminent domain. If you have an interest and are minded of what's going on, some of these laws reflect us personally. And like I say, being involved in legislation, we're sending letters and just trying to say as a whole, whether it's a whole of a industry, like the Home Builders Association, an industry such as the Medical Doctors Association, all of them are utilized as a unified voice. So when things like this come up that affect municipalities, and it's saying to all, this one didn't go right, so all. And another one is the increase of tax, that there's a specific city that they're being told after a certain percentage, they can't raise taxes, and right now they're at zero, which means they are being told you can never raise taxes. Effects like that sometimes needs to be looked at in a broader spectrum, because when it reflects the whole, sometimes it is very unfitting for what the purpose is intended. So again, if you have interest in that, I encourage you to be a part of that. I'd also like to just request, as new city manager is busy about appointments, and I know we try to make as many as we can, you've done some TML, the Greater Nashville Regional Council and the MPO is very active, very involved. We're a member of that, we pay monthly, I'll give you this information, but we pay for that. The invoice that I gave you, that he gave you a couple of weeks ago, for us to be involved in this regional council, and because we're paying of it as a membership, it is very, very informative for someone from the city to continue being plugged in. I make it occasionally, as many as I can, I'm on the executive board, but it is open to any designee, city manager, or codes director, or someone who is aligning with grants and proposals and substitute, any kind of things that may come about, and planning and zoning as well. It kind of covers transit authority, which doesn't affect us, but on occasion Dixon has commented, and we are in the line of traffic, to have some type of transit authority initiatives or any type of lines coming from Nashville to Dixon, and that would be a bus pickup, and that would be wonderful. We already have rideshare, but something of a open transit, we could stop at the interstate and offer that to the residents of Fairview as transit into town, which is wonderful, and I keep abreast, but it's not as important as some of the others, such as the rail transit and the, some of the other roads, interstate. So what I wanted to propose is there are, two, three, four, five, six, seven, there's about eight monthly meetings that either I am on the invite list, city manager's on the invite list, or an appropriate department head is on the invite list, or a designee. I would like to get that list together and distribute it to all the board, because on occasion I'll send y'all, I can't be there, it'd be great, hope someone can go, or this is something going on. I sent something today that's happening at the factory, it's economic development from the state of Tennessee, on the 25th, from 7 to 11, I sent it out to you today, to everybody. If we could get a calendar and maybe have that in some way, because, you know, you went to the chamber luncheon before, the different things, I just feel like that's something that we could report, not only to the public, but also to make a presence. And one of the things I get told on a regular basis is, we never see anyone from Fairview, and I just think that that's, you know, we're turning the table, and I believe knowing about them and scheduling them and divvying them up, maybe things of interest. You know, you may have electrical interest, or, you know, there may be something specific, anything with fire or police. Commissioner Sutton, that would be maybe something you're already involved in. So us to maybe roll, pull a calendar together and be able to know that we're making as many as possible, and that we're reporting back to the council as a whole. I try to pick up handouts each time, because I want to share with y'all, like Williamson, the Williamson County Chamber just had a meeting on the 13th, and, you know, they had all the mayors there reporting of what was going on and what was taking place, what was some of the new development, commercial, and retail. So it was a great opportunity to share, and many people there had not been to Fairview in many years and was very surprised at some of the comments, and of course, the Walmart, most of them knew because of the advertisement or the promotion, but, you know, that tends to state something different, and it opened up good conversation. Two other mayors that received Walmarts in the last two years, they were able to kind of run down, and we're already seeing, such as Anytime Fitness, the nail salon, we're already seeing the consistent ones that follow Walmart. So it's proactive education, and I think that's healthy, and if the board's agreeing with that, I would, you know, just try to pull a calendar where, on a monthly or quarterly basis, we're doing as much as we can interacting regionally as much as we're doing what we're doing locally. All right, last thing, I know the hour's late, but I find this very informative, and it is on the Town and Cities, I think the Town and County, the newspaper, but it talks about why cities matter, and I keep bringing that up because it highlights different things, and a lot of times people will say, what does my city do for me, and what does my taxes pay for? I ask the same question. When I pay taxes, it's usually a question I'll ask just because it's what you do when you pay a bill. It says, all, what cities, why cities matter. As with all issues that affect the residents of a city, the power to zone, which we discussed in length tonight, is best exercised by the level of government that is closest to the people. Zoning authority empowers a city to protect residential neighborhoods, promote economic development, and restrict hazardous land uses to appropriate areas of the city. It is designated to reduce street congestion, promote safety from fires and other dangers, promote health, provide adequate light and air, prevent overcrowding of land and facilities, the provisions of adequate transportation, utilities, schools, parks, and other public services and facilities. Without zoning authority, the property values in a city would certainly drop. That can be questionable, but I just wanted to read the article. If you remember last week, it was, or last meeting, it was about public work. So just informative of, your city is active, we have a great proactive staff, and the board here tries to stand for the right things for the whole. I appreciate your interest, I appreciate your plugging in and being here with us, and I'll ask for a motion for adjournment.
So moved?
First and second, any discussion, all those in favor? Good evening, thank you.